Before we begin our regular meeting, we will have the public hearing for the 2022-2023 budget. Our Finance Director, Dennis Bubinak.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Here.
Trustee Laboue.
Here.
Trustee Washington.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Hyferman.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Yeah.
President Holfeld.
Here. Mr. Bubinak.
Thank you, Rich. Tonight, we have a required public hearing as part of the budget process. Our process was, we looked at the draft budget two weeks ago. Staff was directed to bring an ordinance to tonight's meeting for budget passage, and we did publish the notice of public hearing in the April 14 newspaper. Our outcome, the general fund gets most of the work than any budget. It is what local government services are defined by. Those revenues to pay for the general fund are mostly taxes on sales, real estate, places for utilities, and the state income tax share. The expenses are dominated by the Departments of Public Safety and Public Works. Any budgets, current budget, we always keep our eye on the future. We also understand past budgets, and that's obviously very important here, because a couple of years ago, we had the COVID-19 budget. So these last two budgets, we've tried to build back into our budget things that we had to take out during the COVID-19, but we do keep an eye on what's going on nationally as that might affect our next year's budget. The draft budget presented two weeks ago had a surplus of $76,289. Tonight, our surplus has grown to $147,359 due to some changes that are listed in the package. That's about 0.6% of our total general fund budget. Our fund balance policy is four months on hand. We had 3.7 months as of the 4/30/21 odds that those dollars were going to fund balance, that $147,359. Like to note that the board took the time two weeks ago to thank everybody involved in the budget process, so I appreciate that, but that's how closed tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank citizens and businesses in Homewood for picking Homewood as a place to live and work. I'd like to thank the Village Board for the direction on the services that we provide, the departments for providing those services, and the restraints of the revenue environment that we live in, Village Manager Napoleon Haney and Assistant Village Manager Justine Bruno for their day-to-day efforts of directing our operation, Amy Zukowski, who has so many alternatives and answers questions and does so much to put this budget together, a thank you to her, and also new Finance Department member, Kahani Hill, who joined us a year ago today, and she provided input into this budget as her first budget, and she has many more years of budget inputs in store for her. Recommendation is passage of the final 22-23 budget ordinance as found later on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bubinak. You couldn't have said it any better. Public comments with regard to the budget. Anyone in the audience? If not, board comments. We made most of our comments at the last presentation. Any additional comments?
Thank you.
Trustee Laboue. Trustee Washington.
Thank you.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Thank you.
And Trustee Hyferman.
Thank you.
Trustee Roman.
Thank you.
With that, we will adjourn from the public session. Again, thank you. And now, welcome to the Village Board Meeting of April 26. Please join us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Purcell.
Here.
Trustee Laboue.
Here.
Trustee Washington.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Hyferman.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Here.
President Holfeld.
Here. Representing staff this evening, in the audience is our Public Works Director, John Schaefer, our Police Chief, Denise McGrath, Director of Finance, Dennis Bubinak, Community Development and Economic Development Director, Angela Maseris, our Village Attorney, Chris Cummings, Assistant Village Manager, Justine Bruno, and our Village Manager, Napoleon Haney. The minutes of April 12th. Any additions or corrections? Trustee Purcell. Trustee Laboue. Trustee Washington.
Yes.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
May I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved. Second.
Then moved by Trustee Purcell, seconded by Trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Laboue.
Aye.
Trustee Washington.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of $886,482.92. Again, Trustee Purcell. Comments, of course. Trustee Laboue. Trustee Washington. Trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Hyferman.
No.
Trustee Roman.
No questions.
May I have a motion to approve the claims list, please?
So moved. Second.
Then moved by Trustee Roman, seconded by Trustee Purcell. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Laboue.
Here.
Trustee Washington.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The claims list is approved. Of that $886,000, three items comprise the majority of that claims list. Our monthly payment to the city of Harvey for water was $323,000. Fire departments, new air packs, which were grants, $171,000, and our payment to Thorn Creek Sanitary District for sanitary sewage treatment was $76,000. That amounted to $570,000, or 64% of that claims list. Hear from the audience. Anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please come up. And your name for the record, Dave.
My name is Dave Ward, 1661 Cedar. Just a couple of questions reacting to actually an article in the Chronicle this morning about the purchase of a couple of properties that the board's considering.
That's an agenda item, if you want to bring that up during the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's okay.
I looked at it, and it's...
That's okay. We'll get to you when that comes up.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, any written comments received?
Nothing.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve the appointment of Liz Castaneda to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Purcell, seconded by Trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Laboue.
Here.
Trustee Washington.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved, and Liz, would you please come up? I would also like to thank the retiring member, Mario Planera, who has served for years as Plan Commission Chairman and also is a member of the Plan Commission Zone Board who is retiring. So you have big shoes to fill. First meeting's Thursday.
Thank you.
At this time, presentations, proclamations regarding gun violence awareness day and also Arbor Day. Mrs. Thomas.
The 2022 proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Village of Homewood, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Village President Richard Holfeld of the Village of Homewood declares the first Friday in June, June 3, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. He encourages all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
We have a representative. Please come up.
On behalf of the Moms and Dads Action Group and our for profit to prevent gun violence in America, I'd like to thank Mia Holfeld and the Board of Trustees of Homewood for the support in our anti-gun violence efforts. Thank you.
Would you care to get in a plug for Wear Orange Day?
Yes. So, in remembrance of Adia Pendleton, who was shot and killed in one of our Chicago neighborhoods, we wear orange to remember our youth that are lost to senseless gun violence and to help our efforts in preventing gun violence.
And this year, the wearing of Orange Day will be Friday, June 3. I know I'll be wearing an orange tie.
Thank you.
Okay. And the second proclamation, please.
Arbor Day proclamation. Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. The Village of Homewood has been recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation the past 24 years as a Tree City, USA. Village President Richard Holfeld proclaims Friday, April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day in Homewood, and urges residents to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect trees and woodlands.
And that's an acknowledgement to our Tree Committee, who are really out there taking good steps toward that. The omnibus vote, Mrs. Thomas.
The board is asked to approve the renewal of outdoor liquor permits for eight businesses: Grady Snack &amp; Drive LLC, Cilantro Mexican Restaurant, The Fifth Quarter, Ridgewood Tap, Lassen Sports Bar &amp; Grill, Buffalo Wild Wings, Rabbit Brewing, and Maple Tree Inn, and waive certain exceptions allowing local businesses to offer outdoor dining options to their customers. The board is asked to pass Ordinance M. 2218, adopting the village's annual budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023, following the public hearing on the budget conducted earlier. The board is asked to award the bid for Bituminous Mixes to Gallagher Materials of Thornton, Illinois, the lowest responsible bidder. Prices are $61 per ton for surface mix, $57 per ton for binder mix, and $129 per ton for cold patch mix in the amount not to exceed $35,000. The board is asked to award the bid for concrete flatwork to Strata Construction Company of Addison, Illinois, the lowest responsible bidder, based on unit prices submitted in an amount not to exceed $119,010. The board is asked to award the contract for custodial services to Echo Clean Maintenance Inc. of Elmhurst, the lowest responsible bidder, in an amount not to exceed $51,480. The crews will clean four village buildings three times per week and the Science Center twice a month. The board is asked to award the bid for crushed limestone to Shepley Motor Express of Thornton, Illinois, the lowest responsible bidder. Prices are $12.50 per ton for CA6, $217.75 per ton for 1-inch stone, and $17.75 per ton for 2-inch stone in an amount not to exceed $44,750. The board is asked to authorize Manager Haney to engage the services of Illinois Central Sweeping of Blue Island, the lowest responsible bidder, for the contract for sweeping services for five residential and 15 commercial sweeps between May 1, 2022, and April 30, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $8,525 per residential sweep and $810 per commercial sweep. The board is asked to award the bid for tree trimming, tree removal, stump removal, and emergency tree removal services to Home Tree Care of Lockport, the lowest responsible bidder, in an amount not to exceed $113,000, and award the bid for sectional tree trimming to Winkler's Tree Service of LaGrange Park, the lowest responsible bidder, in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Board is asked to approve the contract renewal with Traffic Control Company of Chicago Heights for pavement marking in an amount not to exceed $120,000. Company has done this work for the village since 2019. The board is asked to approve the renewal of limited scavenger licenses for midway building supply of South Holland, tri-state disposal of Riverdale, and total disposal of Gary, and the renewal of scavenger licenses for Homewood Disposal, Allied Waste Transportation of Chicago Heights, and Waste Management Inc. of Lombard. The board is asked to pass Resolution R. 3110, authorizing President Holfeld to enter into two real estate purchase contracts with Virginia A. Budney for the property at 17900 Dixie Highway and the property at 2066 Ridge Road for a total price of $1,160,000, and authorize President Holfeld, Village Manager Haney, Village Attorney Cummings, and other village officials to take all actions required to complete the purchase and acquisition of the properties as provided in the real estate purchase contracts.
Thank you. How much of a question for the audience, Dave?
Okay, this has, again, has to do with the proposed purchases of two properties. Probably the complaint, or my big question is, why would we want to put a water tower in such a prominent location in the village where, you know, you see it coming into the village underneath the viaduct, you would see it leaving the village underneath the viaduct? Why wouldn't we take and put it in a place where it is, you know, a new tower in the general vicinity or replacing where it is now at Public Works, as opposed to creating a new kind of industrial site within the village? And then, as a secondary question to that, to purchase that property and taking it off of the tax that they're, you know, the property taxes for the water tower where we can put it someplace else just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Those were the questions that I had when this was first brought up to us. Mr. Schaefer is in the audience, and he can explain it as far as the balancing of the system and all of that.
Right now, the current water tank that we have is located right behind the village hall here. It's an old tank. It needs a lot of work. The estimated work that we need them done just to have it painted is $800,000 alone. It's all hand work that needs to be done. With that, we looked at purchasing another property within the village. It has to be located within several blocks of this facility right here, because we have three current overhead water tanks that balances out our distribution system, that keeps a level of pressure throughout the village, throughout the village's distribution system. So it's critical that we have it in this downtown area. One is, like I said, the distribution balancing out the water pressure and then also for fire flow. We looked at several sites. This site was the most, we thought was the best location for it, that we could actually construct a new water tank, as the current one is still being used, and then eventually, once the new site and new water tank is up and running, then the old site can be removed.
Correct.
So, we have the infrastructure right here, or obviously, since the tank is functioning, why is it that it couldn't be placed someplace on this general vicinity, you know, in general same location, you know, and then build it not on this exact same site, but somewhere maybe to remove a little bit and then take it on down? That's what we did. We did look at other sites within the community. We looked at the, you know, we're not able to build it at the same site that it's located right now because of the buildings that's surrounding it and the safety issues with that. We looked at the parking lot by St. Joe's. Let's see if that would possibly be an option there. We felt that would be a huge impact on the residential area right next to it, because it would have to go all the way towards the back of the property. We did look at the parking lot. There's some current infrastructure underground there that can't be disturbed. It's a geothermal system that we have to be eco-friendly. There's well sites throughout that parking lot that can't be constructed there.
And there's also the increased capacity.
Yeah, we are. It will be an increased capacity on the new tank. I have to say, the shame that, you know, that will be so prominent within the village now, and also it's a shame that it's probably after that.
Point taken. Yeah, you're okay. Sure, it's because of television nowadays.
No more related to the previous guy who asked questions. I also live at the same address, and I'm also a trustee at the library board, and we do want to share our concerns about the fact that this property will be removed from the taxes, from the real estate tax roll. And I'm just curious as to why this property, in combination with what seems to be an unrelated property across from Ridgewood Tap, which is the 2066 Ridge Road property, I mean, it's not derelict, as far as I can tell, and there's no specific mention of what will happen once you purchase that property. Why does that have to be purchased?
It was the same ownership, and it was, call it a package deal. That will be commercial development on that site, so it will remain on the tax rolls.
So because one owner owns two properties, you were forced to buy both?
No, we were not forced. We were not forced. We chose to buy both properties. It was an opportune time, and the price was very good.
Okay, because the old Homewood Library, which is the property at 17900 Dixie Highway, sold for $595,000 in 2004, when the market was high. So now you're looking at that plus a building that, you know, I mean, I'm not a real estate agent, but did you get estimates as to what the value of the property is?
The property was appraised.
Okay. And so, that property plus that little bit of, like, a one-story property where there used to be a real estate company in that building, and currently, I think it's empty except for the Metra that has a...
There's some other uses in there.
Yeah, yeah. So that went, that, you think that that is appropriate to spend 1.16 million on those two?
If it wasn't, if we didn't feel it was appropriate, it wouldn't be on the agenda. Again, you heard Mr. Schaefer talk about the needs.
Right, right.
And then, we're looking at commercial development on the other side. Good things will come from that.
But, you know, you're looking at three taxing bodies, the school district, the park district, and the library, and we solely depend on revenue from real estate taxes, whereas the village has the advantage of receiving revenues through sales taxes.
We're cognizant of that, and we don't make any moves without that taken under consideration.
Okay, but there was no contact at all with the administration at the library about this purchase?
No, ma'am, there was not.
That's not necessary?
No, ma'am. I'll let our attorney address that.
Okay. I'll sit down so you can explain.
There's no legal requirement that every, the bottom line here is the village's obligation to provide water to everybody, and that's a service that benefits the entire town. Without revealing all the negotiations that went on, I can tell you that all of those sites were looked at, and this was not an easy decision for the board to come to, to bring it in front of you. The long-term goal here is to keep the property across the street from the train station on the tax rolls. The alternative, the village had a need to serve all the citizens, the village had a need to acquire some piece of property downtown. The other alternative is to condemn the property. And there certainly is a public purpose in acquiring a property for a new water tower. The problem with that is the village would have paid far more than, between legal fees and everything else, and also, there'd be a significant amount of delay. And so I think that's the thought process that went into us. It was painful for everybody, I think, in terms of making this decision. It's, once again, it's the best bad decision that they could make. It's not a bad decision, but it's a tough decision, is the point. But I think the concern of the board was, overall, they have to make sure that there's water provided to everybody, and it's an ongoing concern by a trusty issue.
Are there any other questions? If not? Board comments with regard to the consent agenda? Trustee Purcell. Trustee Laboue. Trustee Washington. Trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing.
Trustee Hyferman.
I have no questions.
Trustee Roman.
No questions.
I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
They're moved by Trustee Purcell, seconded by Trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Laboue.
Here.
Trustee Washington.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. All business, Mrs. Maseris.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the proposal for new construction of the Homewood Brewing Company at 18225 Dixie Highway. This site is the former Bogart Char House on Dixie Highway. The village acquired this property in 2018. At that time, the building had been vacant for nine years, and we recently partnered with the Cook County Sheriff's Work Force Program to demolish the building in preparation for future development. In October of 2021, the Village Board approved a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Homewood Brewing Company for construction of a restaurant and craft brewery. The new facility is a brew house, full-service kitchen and dining room with outdoor seating areas. Since that time, the developer's team has been working on the design of the building and gone through several site plan review meetings with staff, and has also attended hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Appearance Commission. The project has received unanimous recommendations from both Planning and Zoning Commission and Appearance Commission for all zoning approvals. And the developer has also received Appearance unanimous approval of the building design, the building materials, landscaping, photometrics, and lighting. The village, this project includes multiple public improvements, including reconstruction of Miller Court, construction of the public utilities within Miller Court, preparation of the site with underground stormwater detention, and rerouting or burial of the electric power lines. The recommendation is to approve all components of this project, and the owners of Homewood Brewing, Carmella Wallace, Robert Lauderdale, as well as their architect, Mike Mathis, and Greg Berman of Crostown Design, are in attendance at tonight's meeting and can discuss this project in more detail and answer any questions.
Who would like to represent the brewery? Mrs. Wallace, come on up. Robert?
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President. Mayor Chairman. I'm Robert Lauderdale.
I'm Carmella Wallace.
As stated before, Homewood Brewing Company, our goal is to develop a craft brewery, a state-of-the-art, a master craft facility for the development and consumption of craft brews. We're going to have a wide number of beverages that are going to be introduced there. Our food is going to be a combination of Creole cooking and Midwestern-style food, so something that everyone's going to fully enjoy.
And our objective is to create that third place. When we have work, we have home, and we want it to be the place that you come to, the place to bring a sense of community, a sense of belonging, where everyone is welcome.
Again, we're Homewood Brewing Company. We're a... We're here for the village. Our goal is to provide, like Carmella said, that place where you can go to, that home away from home, somewhere where you can bring your family, your friends, or just after work, if you just want to relax somewhere without having to go home and see, you might want to see. Again, it's that perfect, we want to strive to make it that perfect place where everyone can come to enjoy.
What are your plans for opening? I should ask the architect. Come on, Mike, come on. Your renderings are beautiful.
Thank you. Our current plans, we're hoping for, to submit for permit in July, early July, and start construction as soon as possible with a probably a 12-14 month construction cycle.
Next, you're from summer. You're from July, Labor Day of next year.
Yes.
Okay. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to this project?
Five, I'd like to say, hands off. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful idea. Look forward to it. Those are the guys. Sorry, Yoko.
Comments from the board?
I agree. I think it looks absolutely beautiful. If it looks anything like it does in the pictures, it's going to be fantastic. That is the type of structure that is really needed in that spot. I mean, Bogart's was such a draw. You know, it was kind of, it's a gathering place. And they have this there and then brought out to the street even. It's just going to be a magnificent place right there. Wish you guys the best of luck. I'm so happy to have you. Thank you.
Trustee Baloo?
Yes, beautiful building. I'm glad I'm welcome here. So I'll be just patronizing the business back here.
Trustee Washington?
I agree with what's been said. I'm really looking forward to the Creole cooking.
She will be a good critic of that, too. Trustee Harris Jones?
Very nice building. Looking forward to patronizing the building and the business.
Trustee Hyferman?
It's a gorgeous design and just terrific. I can't wait for it to open.
Trustee Roman?
I agree with everything that's been said. It's a beautiful building. And I think not only are we all excited about it, but our residents are also very excited about it. I think you're going to have a really warm welcome from our community. And thank you for being here.
We all love it. Mr. Cummings, one motion for all four?
That's fine.
All right. With that being said, may I have a motion for the Plata consolidation, five lots into one, Ordinance M. 2219, a special use for a craft brewery, Ordinance M. 2220, a redevelopment agreement as specified, and a resolution in support of a Class 8, R. 3111. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Then moved by Trustee Purcell, seconded by Trustee Washington. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Lubu.
Aye.
Trustee Washington.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The motion is approved. And I would like to point out, we're taking a property that was off the tax rolls, putting it back on the tax rolls.
I knew that you would put that.
You knew I would. You knew I would. I couldn't pass that up, Yoko.
I know.
Okay.
I was like, why would we sell this?
Oh, yes. General board discussion. Trustee Purcell. Trustee Purcell.